I'd like to welcome you to the September 11th, 2018 special budget meeting. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Would you please rise with me as we say the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which stands our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, do you want to do a roll call?
Thank you, Mayor, Commissioner Frazier.
Here.
Commissioner Plard.
Here.
Commissioner Reynolds.
Here.
Commissioner Stonehouse, excuse me, Schlegel.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Mayor Protam Stonehouse and Mayor Campana.
Here. Mayor Protam Stonehouse is not here. Could I have a motion to excuse Commissioner Plard?
Your Honor, I move that we excuse Commissioner Stonehouse because of other commitments.
Is there a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
O's, carries, six, zero. We have the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, Commissioner Reynolds?
I move that the agenda be approved.
Is there a second? Commissioner Frazier?
Second.
All those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
O's, carries, six, zero. Come to announcements. I have one announcement. As you know, today is the 17th anniversary of the terrorist attack on the Twin Towers in New York. In that attack, we had almost 3,000 people killed, 6,000 injured. Of that total, 343 were firefighters, 71 were police. And today, thousands more are now affected by the after effects of that terrible attack. I think that we should, I would like to take a moment to pay honor to all those who responded and who are impacted by that tragedy. Can we have a moment of silence, please? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we have, we come to our first public comment. Public comment is that time when citizens may address the commission. Does anybody at this time wish to address the commission? I'm an open public comment. Yeah, okay, we're good, we're good. Okay, we're gonna move to the consent agenda. You see it in front of you. Anyone want to make a motion? Commissioner Frazier?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
Would there be a second? Commissioner Reynolds?
Second.
All those in favor, say yes.
Yes.
O's, that carries, six, zero. Can we come to new business for the evening? We have many items on new business. Who's gonna start it off? City Manager, Gary, Chief Financial Officer, Gary Simpson.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. Tonight is the last of the four scheduled nights, and it's the one that I like to call the Friends of the City of Marquette. Should be a little bit more of a fun night than we've had the past few nights. Just one bit of housekeeping from two sessions ago from the John Swinson Two and Three Quarter Hour Show. A little bit of follow-up regarding the beautification committee. I handed out earlier a memo that he had written to address the promotional fund fees, so please read that. And if you have any questions, you can feel free to ask, and we'll address that at that time. So without further ado, we'll just go in the order that we have. So we'll ask Andrea from the library, and we'll be on page 150 of the budget book.
You wanna say anything first, Gary, or should I just dive in?
Just dive right in.
All right, I'll just dive right in. Gary said I had an hour, so I'll try to keep to that. Just kidding. First of all, I want to thank the City Commission for its continued support of the library. This support allowed the library to request a bond millage renewal from the city voters in August of 2017, and that ballot proposal passed by over 80 percent. The construction project, despite the front street stairs, is going very well. We continue to be on schedule and are getting good patron and staff feedback from the changes as they're installed. I also want to thank the Commission for approving the headly override ballot proposal. Peter White will be on the ballot on November 6th. The override in the City of Marquette would restore our perpetual 1.5 mil operating millage. It is currently at 1.3685. This additional millage of .1315 would raise approximately $70,000 for Peter White. That does take into account all of the tax captures and helps to ensure the ongoing stability of the library's operating budget. We will also be on the ballot this November for a headly override in Chocolay Township and Sands Township to restore their one-mil rates. Chocolay increase is estimated at 58,500 and Sands at 13,500. If all headly overrides are successful, we are anticipating to generate approximately $142,000 in annual revenue for Peter White Public Library. In addition, we are on the ballot in Marquette Township for service renewal and Empal Township for new services. It's a very busy, busy election time for the Peter White Public Library. It's also very important. Without the additional headly override funds, the library will be in an unsustainable budget situation, and we'll have to consider additional cuts to the library services. I know Gary said this was gonna be more fun. I don't know what you all have been hearing. I'm not sure I'm the one to kick off the fun time.
We were depending on you, Andrea.
Sorry. I do have some, like, positive things in here. Before presenting to the City Commission about the library's budget, I reread several years of our presentations because I think it helps put things into perspective. Sometimes comparing just last year to this year is a little deceiving. When the tax tribunal started to hit Peter White, there was a lot of doom and gloom. Some of the doom didn't happen right away, and it bought us some time to plan for the cuts that we knew were coming. Our fundraising efforts continue to pay off. When I started at Peter White, the library board and administration agreed that along with everything else going on, we would focus on quietly building our endowment fund. It has grown from $30,000 to an anticipated $175,000 at the end of this year. In funding year 1819, we will be taking our first annual dis- or just, I can talk, dispersment from the endowment. It's a modest 4%, but I'm so excited about that $7,000 because it represents our third part of our plan for sustainability, which is making sure that we are raising as much money for ourselves as we can. Additionally, we are anticipating an additional $5,000 in operating funds from our own fundraising efforts for the annual fund. Fundraising has been a part of the library's financial stability plan for 10 years. We are consistently raising 10 to 12 percent of our total operating budget. The fact that we're able to raise that much of our budget annually demonstrates the level of community support we have. It's our goal to build in a general endowment fund of over $1 million so that we are able to take an annual distribution of $50,000. While we have remained in a positive budget situation and have been able to build a fund balance, it has been a result of cuts to library services, attrition on staff, extremely tight budgeting, reevaluating all expenditures, upgrades to energy-efficient equipment and lighting, and with the knowledge that continued reductions in funding were on the horizon. As of August 2018, the library has lost $84,000 in annual operating funds due to changes in the taxable values in our service area. By 2020, we are anticipating an additional loss of $140,000 in annual operating funds. The majority of this loss is due to the closing of the Prescotts Energy Plant. In addition, the library will lose tax revenue once the hospital moves to their new location on a brownfield site. During the term of the brownfield plan, the library will not receive any taxes that are paid to the new hospital location. It is our sincere hope that the current hospital remains taxable. In funding year 1718, or I'm sorry, the funding year 1718 budget represents the last budget where we will be able to assume flat funding and remain in the black without additional service cuts. Funding year 1819 is where the rubber hits the road. Without additional funding in this year, the library will barely squeak by without using fund balance to cover operating costs. I need to emphasize that that is possible because we have a budget that includes no staff wages, no budget for furniture and equipment, and very little budgeted for building improvements. Those last two are due to the bond. Once the bond's done, we don't have that money to put towards building improvements in furniture and equipment. Typically, we would budget about $30,000 between those two items. This is not sustainable budgeting. It's a difficult time at the library. If the headly overrides are not successful in November, the library will have to look at more cuts to library services. I hear weekly, if not daily, that the public wants Sunday hours back, and this is just not on the table at this point. With funds going down and costs going up, our long-term funding plans will really backfill what we've already lost. All that said, today I had a patron tell me that the library represents the best in our community, and I believe that's true. I'm confident with public support, we can regain funding to continue offering excellent library services. We've already heard a lot of good, a good deal of support from the public regarding our November ballot issues. Momentum started in August 2017 with the passing of the Capital Improvement Bond, and we're optimistic that we can regain our stable funding and move library services forward in a meaningful way for our community. Not all doom and gloom. What questions do you have about the budget?
Just a quick observation. I would assume that the attendance-wise was down because of the construction?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Wasn't sure how much of that overlapped or came into play with.
There's some overlap. In general, the biggest issue we've had with attendance is our equipment. The gate counters on the main doors to the library are not functioning very well, and so our attendance, our daily gate count has always been kind of tricky, or for the last year or so, has been tricky to get accurate counts on because it fails so often. We do have new gates coming in with the bond project, so hopefully our statistics will be a little more reliable.
I got one more quick follow-up. This doesn't have to do necessarily with the budget, but I think with the venue that you have right now, it might be good to talk about it. What impact does our, when we're dealing with a day-to-day basis at the library, what kind of impact does the homeless situation in Marquette bring to the, bring to the library? How hard is it for you to deal with?
Really, it varies widely. Sometimes it's not a problem at all. We've got homeless people in every day, and oftentimes, they function just like everybody else who comes in the building. We have had several situations where we've had issues. We've had issues with people who aren't homeless as well, so I don't think we want to blame it all on folks who are experiencing homelessness. The Police Department is really excellent. They walk through the library every day. They're willing to come over anytime we need to call them. It does present some challenges. We've had patrons who complain on both sides of the issue, that they're, they feel like spaces are overtaken by homeless people and therefore they don't feel comfortable going into those space. On the flip side, there are people who feel like we should do more to help the homeless. So it's a tricky balance. We're trying to do all that we can to provide the space for the people who need it, but also ensuring that we're not turning other people off, if that makes sense. It does make an impact on the services that we offer, for sure.
I appreciate the candor, just because it's something that, as Commissioners, we hear a lot about. It's a very difficult topic that the community's dealing with.
Yeah.
And how to deal with it in the future. City Manager's been doing a good job. The Police Department's been doing a good job. And unfortunately, those are the first things to pop up, the difficult things to handle versus the, how much of a positive impact the library has in our community. Oftentimes, it's the first thing, you know, are the, are the black eyes on occasion. So, thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Frazier?
Maybe in your coffee shop, you could sell some Peter White Punch. That would go a lot towards your budget maybe. I mean, and if the cops are walking through, make them check out a book to increase your, make it look, you're getting more customers. Have them check out law books or something like that, you know? They have rookies that could study law. I mean, you never know. And I think you're doing a great job. You just squeak by, it gets great. You guys are doing a lot of fundraising, it's great. All the events are great, and you guys are motoring right along. And, you know, Gary does have open office hours, like Mike does, so if you need help, just ask Gary if he'd help you.
He's on call.
I don't see any more questions. I mean, but, you know, everything looks, no drastic changes, no big shifts or things, so.
Yep.
Steady as it goes, I guess.
Steady as it goes.
But we hope for the best come November.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I wanted to, Mike wanted me to point out that the city does give the library 40,000 of its state revenue sharing that we receive. That was, that was actually increased last year. It used to be 20,000, and we doubled that last year, and plan on continuing that this year.
Yep. Much support, much appreciated.
This may not even be part of it, but the rentals downstairs, the money goes to the library, correct?
Mm-hmm. And that contract is up in 2020, so that's something we're gonna need to talk about in the next year.
The arts and culture you're talking. Can you get somebody else in there? Or is arts and culture gonna stay there? I assume they're gonna stay there.
I hope they're staying because we've made a lot of changes to the.
For them.
To the building in the hopes that.
Do you have more room for other ventures down there?
Yeah, actually, we are sharing a space with arts and culture with the new floor plan. When you come down the stairs, it's an open reception space that will serve as an art gallery and also kind of, I don't want to say waiting room, that sounds very doctor-office-esque, but a place for people to congregate on the lower level while they're waiting for community room events or to get into arts and culture outside of youth services. And that will be a shared space with arts and culture. And then we've expanded the youth services department a little bit.
I'm just thinking, you know, if you can, the more rent you can bring in, obviously the better. It'll work out. Commissioner Plard?
Yeah, I think it also should be said that you're redesigning that whole area. And there were, you take, you've listened to, there were a lot of complaints about the skylights and all that. You listen to those, and you're getting rid of a lot of that. It's gonna be a lot more, a lot better climate-controlled.
Yes.
So if anybody's watching or listening, or you know anybody that's interested in room space, yeah, let people know that the library is redesigning. Once you're, once all the construction is done, it's gonna be dynamic. The whole library's gonna be dynamic. You're doing a great job, Andrea, and I just want to say that too publicly. We're very fortunate to have you, I think personally. And the library, I don't think you're gonna have trouble with those elections, from what I've heard. Of course, nobody, least of all me, takes an election for granted.
Right.
So I understand your, you know, what you're, what you're looking at, but I don't think the library can be on a better course than it is right now.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Okay, with that, we'll continue the fun. We'll have the DDA with Mona, page 233.
Okay, we still have more from us?
So the pressure's on Mona. We gotta ramp up the fun on this session.
Nope. Andrea started with steady as, steady as we go. I apologize for my lateness. I thought this started at 5:30, so.
You're on time, you're here.
I'm here. Okay. Well, I think, I guess, we start on page, is it 233, Gary?
233.
233, for an overview of the DDA. I'm not gonna bore you with all the going through line by line, and, but we have this year added one more full-time maintenance person. As our responsibilities continue to grow, we find that we need more maintenance staff, more staffing to help carry out what we do. So we did add an additional full-time maintenance staff. And then we also have pulled one of our maintenance staff off and given him 70 percent of taking care of the meters. So rather than, we used to contract that out, so now we have a person that kind of just takes care of the meters. He collects the money and fixes the meters and all of that. So I guess I could talk a little bit about what we did last year. I don't know if you want to do that, or just move right into the budget. But we did do substantial, continued substantial street repair, sidewalk repair projects. Last year, we did the North Front Street project. We also installed some vehicle charging stations in the parking structure. We had, we did have some electrical vehicle charging stations. That company went out of business and no longer supported the product. So with, we found a new vendor and did install some new ones. We, there was much demand for that. We got a lot of calls in the office about that. We restriped all of the parking lots, and that is seven public parking lots. Installed 254 flower baskets and maintained them for the summer. We have raised the private funds to initiate the Phil Amisto statue, and we were able to raise enough money to contract with an artist and install that. That was, I think, a kind of a unique event for our city, and we do have funds still remaining to maintain both the park and the statue. And then we received $4,000 for the Halloween spectacle for the city. We are no longer going to participate in that particular event. It is quite time-consuming, and also it has been moved out of the downtown area, so we really can't justify putting money into that. We also received a 20, well, it was 2,500 we applied for, a $2,200 Keep America Beautiful grant, and that was to install cigarette dispensers across the downtown area and areas where there's high cigarette butts, and also to encourage people to understand that cigarette butts are actually litter. We also supported the Father Marquette project, and then we raised funds to install, last year it was the umbrella project, this year it was the butterflies, but we did raise private funds for both of those projects. So just some events that we do over and above all of the maintenance. We do the Marquette Farmer's Market, as you know, the Downtown Farmer's Market, the Blueberry Festival, Music on Third, the Barreg Avenue Festival that will be coming up soon, Ladies Night. We do the winter snow parade in the city tree lighting, and then we also do a little indoor golf tournament in the spring called the Downtown Twisted Tea Off. So that's kind of an overview of what we did last year, what we continue to do. So if you go to page 235, it's just a detailed budget, and I don't think we have to go line item by line item on that unless you have questions on it. But the projected revenue is $1,375,880, and projected expenditures of $1,374,77. So this year, we have $81 of revenue over our anticipated expenditures, which is fabulous because we don't have to dip into fund balance. Meter revenues this year are 215,000. We have 341 active parking meters right now. And we've calculated the average monthly users of 31,463. Average time that people purchase is just a little bit over an hour, and 76 percent is cash and 23 percent are credit card usage. As we move into next year, hopefully, we're gonna be able to implement the pay-by-phone technology, so that ideally will increase probably credit card usage. We have about 165,000, we anticipate, we're gonna bring in for parking rentals, and those are the hang tags that employees purchase. And we, right now, we have 475 of those employee permits issued, and then an additional 45 for 25, 24-hour residential parking. We're seeing a real demand for 24-hour residential parking in our parking lots. And it's really difficult because with, obviously with winter snow removal, it's kind of hard to manage that. So that's something that, you know, we continue to struggle with. We brought in, we anticipate bringing in just a little bit over 40,000 in promotion and event sponsorships. That has continued to increase. We work hard to try to get private sponsors for some of our events. Our largest income source, of course, is TIF revenue, and that's just short of 786,000. And then we also have the two-mil tax, which isn't really two mils anymore, it's 1.87 something, and that's about 48,000, and 29, well, just short of 30,000 comes from the original TIF, or original DDA district, and 19,000 from Third Street. And then we bring in some other miscellaneous revenues. We rent the commons out, farmer's market fees, and then just some, some other types of things. And then looking at expenditures, our personnel wages and fringes are 526,887, and that is a 10 percent increase over last year, and that includes about a 2.5 percent increase for employees, and then an addition, that additional full-time person. Last year, we hired, we hired them this year, not quite halfway through the year, so it'll be a full, full wages and benefits reflected in next year's budget. As far as professional and contractual, we contract for snow removal for the parking lots, just short of 38,000. The management fee to, for the parking, parking meters is 35,000. Elevator maintenance is around 7,000. And then we have about 60,000 budgeted for next year for consultants. We know that we're gonna need to work with the city for a downtown plan and a retail market analysis that came out as part of the redevelopment-ready certification process. That was one of the deficiencies, that the city did not have a downtown plan, so we'll probably be working on that. We also, it's, we also pay about $9,700 a year for credit card fees for the farmer's market and now for the meters, and some payroll accounting services of 3,700, and then web and IT services for around 5,000. We also have rental property. We also pay rent, obviously, for an office. We're planning on moving our office this year, so our rent is actually gonna double. We anticipate it's gonna be about $18,000 in the upcoming fiscal year. It was about 8,800 in the last several years. Maintenance and parking rental for our parking garage and for storage facilities is right around 19,000. And then we spend about another 70, well, 76,700 on promotion, marketing, and events. And with those events, we've been able to partner with some organizations. We raised 2,200 for the Women's Center for Ladies Night. And then we worked with Tammy and Bill Duprah in the Third Base Bar for the newest event that we've started, which is Classic Cars on Third. And last year, that event raised 13,000 for the Women's Center, and we look forward to raise a little bit more this year. They are really, they're real go-getters as far as sponsorships. And then we also do the Downtown Spring Open. We do that as a fundraiser for the building fund for the Janson House, and we raised about 2,500 for the Janson House. And then just to kind of give you a perspective, I think people forget that events take resources. So like the holiday parade and the tree lighting cost about $5,000 a year to put on. The Barreg Avenue Festival that'll be coming up soon is about 8,000. Fortunately, we have a $5,000 sponsor. Meyer contacted us and asked us if they could sponsor that event, so that, we'll bring in some money from that. And then, you know, we did, we are participating with the city now with Art Week, so we've been working to do some public art projects, temporary art projects the last two years, and we have raised, been fortunate to raise enough money to cover the costs of those. We spend about another 85,000 for maintenance supplies and services, and then about 48,000 for utilities. That's for the parking lots, electrical, storm sore, and then the commons is about $8,000 for utilities. So, get a breath here. Just, just to recap, another quick little overview, we did just receive a $300,000 MEDC facade grant, and we were actually one of three communities out of 60 in the state that applied for them. So we're really proud of that, but those will be, those are flow-through funds. Those will go to property owners. However, that is, that is not reflected. Um, however, that is, that, um, is not reflected in this budget because we just got word of that. Um, we also, the farmer's market actually costs about seventy thousand dollars a year to operate. Um, that is about fifty-one thousand over the income that we bring in for the farmer's market, for farmer's market fees. So the DDA TIF funds are actually supplementing that farmer's market for just about fifty-two thousand dollars a year. Um, we are working really hard to find, to work to make that a sustainable program. Um, I just don't know quite at what point, um, we'll hit that sweet spot where the vendors will no longer be able to pay the, the amount that we will need to cover it. Um, right now there's paying a hundred and sixty-five dollars a ye, a season to participate. Um, we did apply for a two-hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-dollar farmer's market grant with the USDA. We won't hear, um, until the end of this month if we receive that or not. It's actually a three-year grant, so if we receive that, we're golden. Um, the past, we've received one for forty-six thousand and another for seventy-one thousand. So I am optimistic that we'll get this grant, but we just don't know. Um, and then parking operations, I will say that this is the first year that the revenue is over expenditures for parking, um, which is wonderful. Um, with the bond payment, if we charge the bond payment back to parking, um, there is a deficit, but that does, that's covered with TIF funds. But, um, so we're actually at seventy-five thousand dollars over, um, over expenditures with parking revenue this year. And then, um, we, we have already talked about utilities. Snow removal costs about forty-five thousand for the parking lots. We spent another eighteen thousand for holiday lights, thirteen thousand for flowers. Um, and then we do have a bond outstanding. And that bond is a fifteen-year issue. And we issued in twenty-eleven, so it'll be done in, what, twenty-twenty-six? Yeah, and there's a nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar, um, outstanding balance on that. So that is kind of a recap. Um, the other thing that we have added is some capital projects. Um, we have a hundred and forty thousand budgeted for the, um, Hundred Block of West Washington Street. I've not heard yet from city engineering if that project's going to move forward. Um, twenty thousand for some small facade grants to match the, um, funding that we got from the M E D C. And then eleven thousand just for some street amenities. We need more trash cans, um, need more s, street benches. So with that being said, we should be able to carry forward a bal, a balance of nine-hundred-and-fifty-five thousand, six-eighty-two. And we, we tried, we're trying to continue to, um, accumulate fund balance so that we can start to move forward on some of these bigger projects that we know are going to be in the pipeline. Um, we know we're going to need a, we know we're going to need a parking structure. I mean, that's going to be, uh, in the future. Um, so we've put money in the budget for, hopefully, for this upcoming year to update our parking management splan, plan, to start a feasibility study on a parking structure. Um, also, there's a lot of feedback from Third Street property owners. They would really like a, to take that Third Street sustainability plan and put a development plan together. Um, so that would be a TIF, um, funded development plan. And then, you know, the Barreg Avenue project, we've been talking about that for years. And it's just a matter of accumulating the funds to, um, to do that project. The, part of the issue, and you'll be, you'll see this coming through shortly, is the city actually contracts with the DDA for parking management and for maintenance. And over the years, those maintenance responsibilities have increased. And the cost for those maintenance responsibilities has increased to the DDA. And I think, um, talking with staff over the last several weeks, I think we are coming to a, an agreement, um, to have better understanding of what the city's responsibilities are and what the, the DDA as an organization's responsibilities are for public facilities. Um, you know, the, the down, your downtown's not an island. We are part of the city, um, you know. So I think that there is a happy medium as to what is charged for, um, projects. The last three years, we've spent, um, six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars on sidewalk repair projects. And that is six-hundred-and-seventy-two thousand that really can't be, we'll, we'll never be able to pay a bond issue if we continue to do some of the repair maintenance projects that really, by city code, are really part of the city's responsibility. So I think we're working through some of those issues. Um, your city manager understands that, and so I think we're correct in some of that. But I know that he'll address that later and you'll see that agreement come through. So, that being said, if you have any questions, comments?
Just a couple of quick, uh, number one, why are you moving?
Because our office is just too small and we're like over top of each other. And so if, if we have, if we have two people in there talking and one person on the telephone, or if I'm even trying to meet with a potential developer, there's no privacy. Um, we just need more room.
It's a big chunk of change.
Yeah, it is.
And then to, explain to me about the, uh, rental space for the farmer's market. Number one, it's such a fabulous event. Um, I've got to go to it more times this year than I ever have. But at one sixty-five a season, does that mean, you said a hundred and sixty-five a booth?
I think it's a hundred and sixty-five.
And that would be?
Yeah, I do need to talk to you guys about the fee schedule because I don't think they got the fee schedule early that we wanted approved.
I didn't see it.
Um, no, I don't think it, I don't think it was sent. Remember, we talked about it and, yeah.
It wasn't in the budget.
Yeah, we'll need, no, I had forgot to send it. And, um, it's a hundred and, it's either a hundred and sixty-five or a hundred and eighty-five for the entire season. And then what the, here it is. It's, um, a hundred, yeah. It wa, it was a hundred and fifty. We're asking for next year to go up to a hundred and eighty-five per season, per booth. Um, and then we have daily vendors that come in just for the day. And we charge them ten dollars a day now and would like to increase that to fifteen a day.
Holy Christ, come on, Mona. Get o, I mean, get up there, get, charge them for what they got. The, the captive audience that you're feeding them, I mean, why not twenty-five or forty? Um, as far as I'm concerned, I think you can, I think, and, and I realize it's not going to make or break your budget.
Well, it kind of does. And I don't disagree with you, but it's, and it can, it's, it gets really, um, contentious, to say the least.
Well, there's, how many people do you think are going through there every, every Saturday?
I know how many people are going through there. Yeah, we, we put about two thousand people a Saturday through there. And the market brings in, not to us, obviously, but the market brings in probably over a quarter of a million dollars a season.
Okay, so?
Yeah.
Just out of curiosity, would, would a seeds and spores be one sixty-five as much as anybody else because they take up?
Well, no, they would pay per space. It's ten by ten space, so they pay three, three spaces.
Sure, okay.
Yeah.
Um, and that's important to know. How mu, and do you have rough estimate or do you know how many, uh, seasonal passes you sell versus the, the daily passes?
I have a estimate, I have a guestimate. I don't have a real estimate. I think we save, I think we have fifty-one spaces. And I think we save about, I think she saves maybe ten or twelve, uh, market for seas, for turnover for daily vendors.
So you might have ten or twelve that are not seasonal?
Yes, yeah.
I think you're giving them a heck of a deal.
I agree with you. I absolutely agree with you.
And, and this even goes back when we were talking about having your DDA businesses be able to go ahead on a, uh, any beautiful day like this and go ahead and put a six-by, what is it, six-by-eight display outside their, their store so long as they're ADA compliant and things along those lines. Um, and, and the fee that that would cost them for a, a seasonal fee when that was going through at least a, I think that went through the city commission as well, didn't it?
Yeah.
So, but the big thing there, you know, it's, it's such a, it's such a luxury to have that extra space. And, and I'm not, I, I'm all for small business, I, believe me. But I really think that those, those square feet that you're offering up are so insanely valuable. Um, and I would imagine you've probably got a, a waiting list of, of daily vendors that want to come in.
Oh, yeah, we have, we have a waiting list for vendors. Um, there, it's, I ju, I mean, I just don't know where that, you know, I don't know where that break-even point is where it'll negatively affect the market, where you'll have vendors that say they can't afford it, I mean.
Okay, um, just really nice job with them. I just think that you do a fabulous job with the DDA. There's got to be some way that we can bring in some, make it some money.
I agree.
Thank you. Peter?
You do a good job, Mona, even though we don't really like it. The city doesn't really like it because you don't give us any money, but you do a great job monitoring downtown. I mean, you do a great job. And Third Street, from what I heard from people that have business, they're, they want more parking. I guess you've looked into that. I mean, you know, they've said, well, get rid of some of the buildings that are vacant and break a park. I mean, for Frost Trees and Main Street, that's only a real parking lot on Third Street. Besides, the funeral homes have parking lots, but they're private, you know. So if people that have restaurants there, businesses, they want more parking available on Third Street. Besides, just on the street, in order to get more parking spots on the street now. But like, um, not a parking lot, but a majority of parking, you know, I know you guys are researching that and with all your facades, you'll figure out something. But, I mean, just comment on that eventually and then, um, who, Paul likes your farmer market because he wants to take a space in relation to your farmer markets, maybe? But, and, but maybe you could do it year-round, find a place to do it year-round. Maybe, you know, the market mall is hurting me, it's out of your jurisdiction, but they're hurting. I know the library moved to the Westwood Mall for some of their business. You know, and you could look at market mall, they're vacant, I mean, everybody's moving out of there. Or maybe it's actually the owner up front, that's right around the corner from you. I mean, maybe they could give you some space soon, you know. They're not making, buildings just sitting there. Rent some space out or something, if you go, you'll, I'd, I'd ask around, see if you can figure something out. And some ideas have farmer's market year-round, you know, may, might, you know, make more money for you, who knows? But as far as garbage-gown cans, maybe look at maybe recycling cans downtown because people are really big into recycling. And I don't know if Waste Manager can just give you a can or, or the city goes around and picks up plastic bags worth. So I don't know if they can, we've talked about doing that for the Marina because there's a lot of people that have beverages down at the Marina and they're throwing the garbage and they have to, somebody comes down and picks them and takes them out, which is fine. But maybe a recycling can, I know you can't really monitor that. People will be throwing everything in there, so I know it's, I know it's hard to deal with. We've talked about getting waste, you know, recycling bins for us, but, you know, can't, you have to have somebody policing it, basically. You do all, so I know it's kind of hard and, as far as, I think, you know, I didn't get to mention the park where maybe looking at, maybe, I know Matson Park is basically in your DDA community, but maybe making that a, a non-smoking park. Because I know the new playground, I was on the playground board for a while. That's eventually going to go in maybe in a couple of years. That'll make it that a, a non-smoking park prospect, kind of like Prescott because it's a lot of activity down there. And maybe you could, you know, maybe have a few smokes in the parking lot or something like that. I know there's a lot of vents down there, so it'd be hard to do it, but something we could maybe look at, you know, that doesn't risk a fire, but just litter, you know. I see after the Harbor Fest, you know, just plastic cups everywhere. I mean, they, you do a good job cleaning it up, but still, it's like, you know, just something to look at, maybe.
I actually think that's the city that cleans that up. That's, city manages that park, so it would be up to you guys to make it a non-smoking park. And I wish I had the, I wish I had the power to do so, but that's a little beyond my pay grade.
Yeah, congratulations on the farmer's market thing. And also congratulations on the grant that you just got. I, I was there for the presentation and, uh, and it's, it was, it's awesome, three-hundred-thousand-dollar grant. And, and it should be mentioned that it is for very specific things. There's only certain things you can use that money for, but it does help a lot. Uh, how long is a farmer's market season?
We start the third week, the third Saturday in May. Except this year, we stayed, started a week later because they had the prom there. Um, but we start the third Saturday in May and we go through December fifteenth.
Through December fifteenth? I, I agree with Commissioner Schlegel. I, I would support, uh, I, you know, I think you're, you're shorting yourself on the daily fee. I, I would support a, a fee raise to twenty-five dollars a day. And I would like to see if, for that long, I think two hundred dollars for a fee is not outrageous. Certainly a hundred and eighty-five dollars, I think, is a deal. I would support that also.
Okay.
So if that's something you're, you're thinking about, just to let you know. Uh, because I, you know, I agree, you, you, you're putting two thousand people through there on a, on a weekend, on a Saturday. And it's, it's, it's a marvelous, marvelous project. And obviously you have a lot of participation from the vendors, so.
Yeah.
And I know, I know as well as everybody else in here knows that no matter what you raise, if, if you raise it a dime, it's going to be too much. So they'll, they'll adjust, uh, because they're making money. And they'll, they'll do it, but I like, I like the budget.
Okay.
I might have missed this when you were talking, but the facade grant, did you say it was for Third Street?
Third and, uh, the whole downtown district.
Okay, it's a whole thing, I didn't know if it was one.
Yeah, yep.
Um, okay, and then, you know, as we're honing in on this, uh, farmer's market, I've actually brought this up every single year since I've been on the commission. And I remember every single year you telling me, I think we started, when I started here, it was a hundred dollars. And the farmers get very upset when you went up at ten dollars and then fifteen. And it was a really hard process and it's more difficult for you to be dealing with that and not be doing all the other great things in Marquette. I do realize that we should be slowly raising it and I think that you are and you realize that this is a problem. Um, but I was curious, as we're talking about dailies and Paul and, um, and Mike were talking about, what's an example of a daily user? Because I'm trying to, because I go down there all the time and I'm just thinking, who are like, are we talking Dia de los Tacos? Is it like a daily?
No, no, that's a, we, the food trucks, we bring in a different food vendor every week. They're invited, a different one. Um, and they actually don't pay to come in because one of the things, when we did the surveys for the market, is people wanted ready-made food. Um, an example would be, um, Ronnie Morgan, who is an artist.
Okay.
Um, you know, he doesn't want to commit to a whole season. Um, so he will, you know, rotate through, um, I don't, we have a lot of them. We probably have forty of them anyway, um, that, that rotate through.
Okay, because I'm trying to picture like some of those, like an artist might be a little hard if you raise the rates because what if you sell nothing that day in particular?
Yeah, that's right.
Where like if you're talking about seeds and spores, raising something like that, they're, they're making money every single time that they're down there, so.
Yeah, the, are, most of the, most of the growers are season, season markets. So if they're, they're a farmer, for the most part, they're a seasonal vendor. Um, I think the guy that does the maple syrup, he does daily only because, you know, his season is different. So, you know, I know she tries to accommodate, you know, different seasonal vendors.
Okay, thank you. And the other last question I had is where, where are you guys moving to?
We're going to move in the Three Hundred Block of West Washington Street.
Okay.
Um, at the U P Motors Building.
Okay. I do find that wise, too. I've been to your office a couple of times. And if you ever went in there when they have an event about to happen, like the stuff that's all over the place that you just have to like bring. I think I went on a Friday before a big event or something and I was like, I don't even know how you're walking around in here.
Yeah, we're kind of on top of each other.
Yeah.
And, um, there's no privacy, you know. So if I even get like, if a potential developer comes in, everybody knows, so.
Thank you, Mona.
Mona, is the rail jam dead and, dead in the water, gone, never to see?
I would say it's probably dead in the water, yeah.
I know you had bad luck with it a couple of years in a row.
Well, we had two years in a row. And by the time you get into it, you know, you've got four or five thousand dollars already invested in it. Um, so.
When it happened, it was a very good event, but that's the ski ja, um, ski exhibition on Front Street there.
Yep, I love that event.
Kids are crazy, kids are crazy on it.
And the wonderful thing about that event is it brought young people into the downtown.
Yeah, for.
But the weather just isn't, it just doesn't want, you won't cooperate.
One of the questions I get a lot is snow removal in the wintertime, um, on Third Street and downtown. What's your plan there? I mean, how often you, yeah?
It's my plan?
You guys, you guys pay for it, do you not?
We do, we do not pay for it off to, off of the, um, not the.
Is it reflected in your budget here?
No, what's reflected in the budget is the parking lots and the sidewalks. The snowbanks along the road, the city takes care of that. And you'll see that coming up in the contract. Um, it was twice a year. And what we've kind of talked about with city staff is that it's more as, um, determined by the Public Works Director.
So the, the number of times that they clear the snow out is a decision made by Public Works?
Pretty much, yeah. But you, I mean, normally it's twice a year, which probably isn't quite enough, but.
No, you know, it's, it's the question that people say, well, you, you can't get out of your car, you got to.
No, you know, it's, it's the question that people say, well, you, you can't get out of your car, you gotta climb a snowbank.
Yeah.
Although I think you guys do shovel.
We do shovel, yeah. My staff shovels like, yeah. The issue is it's really expensive and again, you go back to, you know, if you want to do any type of major infrastructure projects, if we want to build a parking structure, we've got to be able to pay a bond payment. And if you're, all your money's going to maintenance, you know, then you don't have any money to build what you need to build to support economic development.
Yeah, unfortunately it snows a lot here, so that's.
I know it does.
The problem. So, okay, well, that's a concern and I think that a lot of people have. They'd like to see, at least.
I think it is a concern, yeah.
Up and down Third Street and, because Third Street is narrow as you know, and downtown, but you're busy and people want to be able to.
I know they're busy.
Move around, so. This thing is not working right. It'd be nice if they would, we could, you know, freak, more frequently clean the snow off. Okay, commissioners, anybody else?
Paul? Sorry, one more. The removal, actually the, the maintenance that you're talking about, uh, the sidewalk, taking the bricks out, getting the stamp work done prior to, last year was the first year you did that?
No, we did it three years ago.
So this has been, this is the third year right now?
This is the third year, yeah. See, what I don't know, and I think this will also change. I don't even know if the downtown sidewalks are within the city's sidewalk, annual sidewalk improvement assessment. I don't think they are. I think they will be in the future, but I don't think they were. Because the sidewalks that we have done, we've done them because they were really to a point that they weren't safe.
Okay, and prior to that, uh, four years ago.
Yeah.
What's your major expense outside of, you know, if you weren't having a major sidewalk repavement job?
Yeah.
Where are you putting that money?
It, well, went into, um, the parking structure, when we redid the parking structure. So bond repayment, um, the farmer's market, $50,000. Parking maintenance, the parking lots. And then trying to, you know, accumulate funds so we can move forward with, we were looking to Bearag Avenue project.
And I'm not saying that there's ever a shortage of work to be done because it's called maintenance, right?
Yeah.
I just wonder if, if it's as grand as it has been the last three years because of the fact that you've got, I mean, you could always put money somewhere or, or put it in the, in the bank to, to hopefully save it up for, uh, larger projects such as the, when the parking ramp was done, that was such a massive undertaking as well.
Yeah.
So I'm just curious if there's, you know, if there's a five-year plan after we're done with the sidewalks, here's where we're headed next with the next two years' worth of, you know, major, uh, infrastructure improvements.
Well, we, we do. I don't think that it's as formal as it probably should be. And again, I think that's something that, you know, we, we probably can improve on for sure. But, um, and you know, if it's a priority that the, that the DDA pays additional times to remove the snow banks, if that's where the, you know, the priority is, if that's where the TIF funds want to be spent. Well, they can't be spent on Third Street for that, but they, you know, then that's, so be it. I mean, that's not really, that wouldn't be my decision. That's a decision of, of the board that you appoint.
Sure. Thanks.
Well, thank you very much. I think we're good. Well, city manager would like.
Just one comment. Um, how many times did we do the sidewalks this year? Was it three or two?
The snowbanks?
Yeah.
Twice, yeah.
Twice.
Yeah. There might be, there was another half one in there sometime, I think, yeah.
The problem is that, first of all, it has to be done at night when the parking is not, uh, happening. And during the same time that the snowbanks need to be removed downtown, they also need to remove, be removed all over town. So our crew has a systematic plan of removing banks all over because that's not the only place we bank snow. And, um, you know, we try to do the DDA more than the rest of the town. The rest of the town gets one time and the DDA gets two. But, uh, you know, given the, the amount of banks and miles of road we have, it's, I mean, we do our best to try to get the DDA taken care of. It's not that it's not a priority at all. It's just that, you know, our staff is spread out pretty thin at night, so.
No, I just have one. And I think too, really, to be honest, since we've done this, since we started the sidewalks plowing, when that started, it, because there was a time when the sidewalks weren't plowed downtown. And I think that now you're getting the snow from both the road and the sidewalk. So it increases the size of those banks. What do I do about the fee schedule?
You can send it to me and I'll forward it to the city commission.
Okay.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Do a great job.
Yes, thank you, Mona. Next up is the Brownfield and Sherry Davy will be presenting page 136. These crazy Brownfielders. Don't get too crazy on us.
The fun continues. Well. Well, I want to thank you first off for your support last night. It's wonderful to have unanimous support of the commission on a new Brownfield project. And I know my board is very appreciative of that, as am I. I also wanted to publicly thank, um, the DDA, their board and staff, and the LDFA board and staff. Because it was through their contribution and efforts and willingness to work on this project with us that's going to make it happen. So all in all, as always, I think we have a pretty awesome team working together. So, um, I guess as far as, um, the overview of what we've been doing, the breakout of the projects and the amounts, um, one of the things I would, um, remind the board of is that we now charge upfront a fee to our project folks to help, um, cover any potential costs with the consultant, some of my costs, uh, any other kinds of costs that are out there. It also reduces the risk so that when someone comes and talks with us and they're kind of committed, but not totally, before we have our consultant get started on even a draft, we like to make sure that there's a little bit of skin in the game financially from our partners. So that has changed, um, and has been an improvement, I think.
Is that a one time or a set fee or is it sliding?
Oh, it's a one time, yeah.
Sliding fee?
It is, yeah. Based on, you know, the size of the project. For example, a small project like Nestledown, I think was $5,000. Uh, the hospital was like $35,000. But as you recall, um, we spent days and days and weeks and weeks in negotiation with consultant and staff and attorneys and everyone on Duke Life Point, so, um, yeah. So it's a sliding, sliding fee. Um, the other thing that we will be doing this year, um, it's not really staff-wise, but, um, it'll be, um, having an intern from Northern involved with the Brownfield Authority. What we would like to do is have them working on some things that would look at some of the increased, um, tax values in the areas where Brownfield projects are, which will help all of us to help folks understand what happens before we get to the paid-off mark when we start capturing the taxes. But the things that are happening in the interim that bring in people and, and funding and jobs. So anyway, we're going to have an intern working with me to try to, um, outline some of the benefits of the Brownfield projects. And, um, we also will be, um, working on priority projects, working with DEQ and MEDC and, um, the city staff on projects that aren't even kind of on the scope yet. But we'd like to be prepared for when they are. So if someone comes into the city and is interested in a project that is in the Brownfield arena, and of course practically every project now will be dependent upon DDA and LDFA because we only carved out known Brownfield projects at the time that the LDFA came in. But, um, as you can tell, we play very well together. So I think, you know, we're going to have some really good, uh, cooperation. So one of our, our key players that keeps us all straight is our treasurer. And I guess I would ask if you have things you would like to add to the, the overall component of that. So moving on to, um, the administration, um, it's pretty, um, pretty easy, I think, as far as, um, we don't have a lot of, a lot of other entries there. But one of the things I would point out is that, um, the rental and parking, you probably will note, has gone down and disappeared. And again, we're very appreciative that the city has agreed to let us have space in the MSC. That works out very, very well. Uh, we meet there. Um, I have an office there. Oh, you didn't? Uh-oh, uh-oh. But it has been very beneficial. We also though, uh, at the same time have worked, um, with the city to find some, um, some rates that are fair in, in utilizing the staff with the, um, with Jen LaPage and Mary and, uh, some of Dennis's time and some of the things that are, uh, necessary to the Brownfield projects that require city staff. So we have worked out, um, a plan with that and I, I know the city manager has told you about that, so. So that's been probably the other change, but it, it's really fair to all. And, um, and again, we, we appreciate having the, the office space. Yeah, sure.
So I kind of like to akin the administration fund, starting on 137. This is, if you can kind of consider, this is like the general fund of the, the authority. This is where we really cover all of Sherry's time, all of kind of that, we can't really allocate it to a project, so this is where it kind of goes. Um, one of the other big changes, I know Sherry had kind of said that, um, we worked out an agreement this year with the, with the, the Brownfield and with the city, that we're going to kind of treat you just like we do the DDA and all of our other component units now that we know our roles. So we do have that fixed charge allocation coming into this fiscal year and that's what she said. You know, we'll be reimbursing some of the city's time and staff to, um, this project. So then I want to move right on to page 138, which is the Nestledown project. This is one of our, this is the little bed and breakfast down on Lake Shore. And what's really kind of cool about the Brownfield projects is they're really straightforward. We capture revenues. The redevelopment agreement tells us how we need to allocate those expenditures. And if anything is left over, we get to, uh, help reimburse the developer. We start putting it towards our local site remediation fund or we get to kind of help our fund balance out for future projects. So Nestledown, actually, we ended up paying off our developer and all of their eligible expenditures this last fiscal year. So this is the first year that we will be, um, allocating an installment to the local site remediation fund. That's the fund that we're going to use to kind of do all these startup costs. So we don't have to do that, that upfront payment from our developers. So in that line item, you're going to see that we've got about $15,000 in captured revenues coming through. And, uh, we've got a little bit, a thousand dollars in that line 801 is going to go to the state for their local site, for their remedi- excuse me, their revolving loan fund. And then the $14,000 of transfers out, 13,600 of it is going to go to the local site remediation fund. The remaining $500 is going to go back to the administration fund, um, which is our little general fund to help cover Sherry's overhead expenditures. I shouldn't say Sherry. It's not all you. So, um, that is a nice little, small little fund. It's operating. It's, like I said, it's nice to have one that's kind of done and up and running and we're able to see how Brownfield really carries out.
Mary, what is the site remediation fund?
That's a revolving loan fund.
Oh, the revolving loan. That's just the savings.
Right, and we'll be able to use those. That's going to be covered later in Fund 241. We'll be able to use those funds to help with the paperwork charges and, um, um, some of the startup costs for any other future projects.
Thank you, thank you.
Yes. Fund two, or excuse me, Fund 237 on page 139 is the Duke Life Point project. Tax captures for this year are just over $1.2 million. This one, we haven't had any, um, the, the, no invoices have come forward for eligible expenditure reimbursement to the developer. So we're not quite sure, um, how that's going to sit in right now. So I've taken those revenues, I've put it against the known expenditures, which at this point are going to be debt service as well as that, um, prorated portion goes back to the admin fund. Um, and it leaves us with a balance of, um, I had it in here, $75,110, or excuse me, $75,110, which is under the 801 professional contractual. We'll be able to use those funds for our consultant. We'll be able to distribute to the state. Um, and we can kind of build up that reserve for the local site remediation fund. But again, there will be expenditures that we'll have to reimburse the developer coming up. We just don't know what those are yet. Um, moving on to Fund 239 on page 140. This is the Veridia project, which it captures, um, the M Bank, UPHP, the Stabridge properties. Those three parcels are going to potentially bring in $491,000. Again, we enter our known expenditures, debt service, a prorated portion to, um, administration, which leaves us with, uh, the $441,090, which is potentially, uh, reimbursable to, um, the developers. As of now, that reimbursement is about $5.3 million that we still owe to the developers for their, um, their costs in this project. Fund 241 on page 141 is that local site remediation fund. There are no tax captures here. This is strictly, all of the, the revenues in this project are coming from other funds. We've got the $13,000 that I already spoke about coming in from Nestledown and potentially we've got another $51,000 coming in from Founder's Landing, which I'll get to very soon. Fund 242 on page 142 is the Cliff Style Project. This captures local taxes only, so this is just a city capture. Estimated about $36,000 in revenues this year. A prorated portion of that goes to the, um, administration fund. We've estimated about $20,000 for monitoring costs. And then, um, the remaining, um, $14,000 is available for transfers. Um, again, this can go to the local site remediation fund or we can roll it into our fund balance for future monitoring costs of that site. And that's a city, um, requirement that we need to do the monitoring on that site. And finally, Fund 243 on page 143 is Founder's Landing. This one has a lot of activity in it. This is kind of a big one. We've got total, total captures of about $553,000 this year. Uh, this project has a long cascade of payments that we need to follow and there's a certain order in which we need to follow those. Currently, we're looking a little short in fiscal year 15, but we expect to catch up in 19 because there's just a little bit of gap with that development that's going on down there right now. That, um, we need those capture, we, once that value comes in as of 12/31/18, it'll roll into the captures for the, the 2019 tax revenues. So we know there's a short, but we kind of expect that it will catch up. Furthermore, in the developer agreement, any short, shortages will be paid by the developer. So there, it'll just roll into that long-term obligation that we owe to them. So again, I entered my known expenditures. We've got debt service, uh, the prorated transfer to the administration fund. There is a reimbursement to the revolving loan fund. We've got some developer debt for their parking deck and, um, bond issues. It comes to about $684,605. Again, as I mentioned, because of those shortfalls, you're going to see up in the revenue side, I do have budgeted for a use of fund balance. We do have options. If we don't want to use that fund balance, we can either defer that reimbursement, that $51,000 to the local site remediation fund. We can delay that another year, um, or potentially we can just leave it as short and the developers, um, will be added to their developer reimbursement, so.
I'll just add in at this point that, um, I think in, um, September, we're going to be looking at a policy because we're now getting to the point where we need to have, you know, some of the thoughts about how it could be used, the best way of using it. So you'll be seeing and hearing more about that once it comes past the board. So you'll be seeing and hearing more about that once it comes past the board.
Could I ask a quick question? I hate to ask questions I don't already know the answers to, but the numbers you were looking at here for the tax captures, the annuals, could that be trans, what's the word? Transposed to be what could be the potential tax revenue for the city for each property once the brownfield bonds are paid off?
No, because we're also capturing on county library and things like that. So there's a bit of a commingling going on in there.
So it'd be less than that number, but not terribly less?
Correct.
Okay. I know that question has been asked to some commissioners and we're still, Jen is still trying to come up with the potential numbers for us. So I thought I'd just ask that while we were here. Thank you. Questions, anybody? Peter?
When is the variety going to be up for Gary to get money? Because I know, I know Mike just asked about Gary getting more money, but I know because you said you don't like Sherri getting all the credit. Well, I mean, Mike gets all the credit for all the stuff Gary does, so don't feel bad, you know. But when is the variety going to be? I know it's a beautiful, you know, beautiful job with the brownfield. When's that going to go up for, when's that brownfield going to be up for them to get, to get Gary, get some money out of that one?
For the general fund, or for the city to get some money from these?
Yep.
We kind of started that this year with the fixed charge allocation, where we kind of said, look, we can, having that, in that administration fund that, my goodness, what is it, $18,000? That's going to go to the general fund this year.
Cool.
So it's kind of one way that we're able to kind of get some money over to the, to the city from the brownfield projects.
It'd be good for all the, you know, with the power plant going, a lot of other places going down. So it's good to have a little bit of income for Gary to look forward to, like that.
Well, in honesty, before Gary starts seeing any of that money, Gary's probably going to be six feet under.
Give it to Mike's chair.
I don't see any further questions.
Yeah.
Everything's, you're doing well.
Thank you.
Under control.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a, I know it's a complex topic, but we've all learned a lot over the years.
I'm going to have a couple for you, but I can't, I can't put them out there right now. I just can't verbalize them. And I guess I'll, I'll, you know, I'm the new guy, so I'll play the idiot. It's pretty easy for me to do. The relationship between the developer reimbursement and the supplies and services?
Okay. Supplies and services would be, can you give me an example of where you're looking at?
Let's look at 239.
That's the revolving loan fund?
Brownfield Veridia project.
Okay, yeah. I like to use that fund, that account number 801. I like to use that as kind of the dumping grounds, my plug for when my revenues exceed my expenditures. This is where it all kind of goes. And that's going to cover our consultant fees and developer reimbursement. However, my developers, or excuse me, the brownfield would like to be able to show the developers that, hey, we're at least looking at this amount to be going to you. So rather than lumping that $2,000 right above it with the $441,090 into one line item, we wanted to say, look, we're going to try and just dog ear a small portion for our consultants. And this is what we're looking at, being able to reimburse to you next fiscal year.
Okay.
It's always a little scary because we do our distributions to the developers in November. And then I have to chew my fingernails to make sure that we have the revenues coming in through the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay. So there really is no... Are the supplies and services directly related to the developer reimbursement? And I'm, I'm, what I'm getting at here is those numbers are so similar, okay? They're, they are, they're dead nuts on. Is that just a definition of where it's being spent when I'm reading this? Because this is so new to me.
Okay. Supplies and services, I'm trying to figure out where you even see.
Underneath that, um...
What account number are you looking at?
Oh, okay, you're looking at the total line item.
Yep.
The, okay. I was going by line, um, okay. That's the, your totals on the bottom.
Yeah, your totals on the bottom. That's just, you're just totaling out, right?
Yes, yep.
All right. I'm, I'm looking at it and I'm trying to think, you know. This is such a, it's a completely new format for me to try and follow, so.
Gotcha.
Thanks for holding my hand.
Yep, no, it's okay. We can get there.
Hmm? You know what I'm talking about?
I'll hold your hand too.
No, stay, stay away. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sherri and Mary. Now, this next one is going to be so much fun. We're all going to need plastic surgery to wipe the smile off of our faces.
And let down left and right from you today.
This is the Local Development Finance Authority with Leslie presenting page 144.
Hey, Leslie.
Hello, thank you. This should be pretty straightforward and hopefully easy. So we have the TIF funding that comes through that we started two years ago now. Okay, so then the incremental increases go to the LDFA. And we pass through the money to the Smart Zone that operates with a budget that's following the... Yeah, that would be helpful. Thank you. So then they set their budget based on our estimates of what the TIF funding is going to be each year. And our funding has been a little bit short from what we had budgeted for our first two years. But fortunately, the Smart Zone has applied for some grants and received a couple of grants that has helped cover any shortfalls. And then they've also been performing under their budget too. So we feel comfortable with the direction that we're headed as far as the, the growth of the TIF funding and then feel very comfortable in how the Smart Zone itself is operating within the budget set with this. I don't know if there's, what else on top of that I could...
There's really not much to say. Really, all the LDFA does, it collects the TIF for the Smart Zone. And then they contract with the Smart Zone. And basically, the LDFA is just the pass-through. So the city collects the money for the Smart Zone TIF, gives it to the LDFA. And the LDFA just passes it down to the Smart Zone. Excuse me. What maybe of note, we're projecting for FY19 to collect $501,000 in total for the Smart Zone. TIF of that, $180,000, $181,000 is the city. And $320,000 is the state because we're capturing both local, the city tax and the schools, state school portion. And the state school tax isn't harmed because the state reimburses that. So the plan is this TIF will continue for about another 12, 13 years, 15 years total. And the way we set it up, once this local capture for the city gets to be $100,000, $400,000, it will cap. So that's when the city general fund will start seeing increases from that. We'll just keep the LDFA kept at $400,000 each year. Although the school will keep increasing. So how we pulled that off, I'm still not sure. But it was a, it was a very good thing that the state allowed us to do.
And I guess too, as far as how the Smart Zone itself is operating, I'm sure everybody here has heard of the Smart Zone and what their operations are. And if not, they have a Facebook page that you can follow to get updates. I feel like they're continuing, you know, we get quarterly updates from them and they're presenting us with two to three new ideas a quarter that have came through their doors. And so they're seeing, I feel like they're happy with the ideas that are coming to them. They still feel like they have some work to do as far as getting outreach. A lot of these ideas are people that work full-time jobs. And so they're not ready to, to open up a brand-new company and get started. But they're, you know, really trying to make sure that they have programming and items that'll target entrepreneurs and really create awareness and make sure that everybody in the community knows if they have an idea, they can come and get support. And I continue to be excited and impressed. I'll be here again on the 24th of this month too with Ray Johnson, who's the CEO of the Smart Zone as well, to provide a more in-depth insight as to the, what they've been doing for the last year too. So if there's questions, I'm happy to answer or elaborate.
Could you clear this up? You said you collect up to $400,000, right?
In time, we will, the city will be, the city's portion will be kept at $400,000, but we're still a good ways away. Like I said, for FY19, we're projecting the city's part will be $181,000. So we still have a ways to grow before we get up to $400,000.
Well, we're not at $400,000?
No.
Okay, it was just a TIF.
But once we do hit $400,000, just for the city part, that's all the city will be giving them. And then the general fund will start seeing the increases over that $400,000.
Okay, so right now, it's about at $181?
$181, yes.
And that goes to Fund?
The Smart Zone.
Smart Zone.
Correct.
Is that enough for the Smart Zone at this point, or are they, does that...
Oh, uh, Smart Zone, they, well, Ray will, Ray and Leslie will present to you at the next city commission meeting, but just kind of the short version. Ray is partnering with the university and is taking over some of the stuff that, like the, what did the Invent at NMU stuff. And so Ray is doing great guns. And even though when we first started out, we were the satellite of the Houghton Hancock Smart Zone, they were actually contracting with Ray to use his services. So it was kind of a, kind of a weird situation where they were supposed to be our parent, but we were actually helping them more. And of course, they were paying for that. So, you know, Ray is doing great guns. Their board is doing great. The LDFA board and Leslie are doing great. So it's still in its early infancy. And so the results aren't gargantuan, but there is a lot of potential there, so.
And they've grown, and you know, we've had growth. We've added new positions. They have a pro, or project manager now. And we're, it's nice that we can tap into the university as well with the Invent and have kind of a one-stop shop so that people feel like they know where to go. And, and I was going to say too, there's a new business on Third Street. And I know they had used the Smart Zone services. So it's exciting to see. Ray will probably mention that again at the end of the month, but... I think it's just good, the collaboration. And I know we have a kiosk, or it's, I don't know if it's in the ampersand yet, but there'll be one going so that people out in the community, out downtown, can go and put their ideas into the, their network and just...
We're going to try to put one in City Hall here as well because there's a lot of traffic in City Hall. So people can, it's really just a computer and a stand. And you can type in your idea, put in your contact information, and somebody from Ray's staff will contact you and see if it's a viable, a viable operation worth pursuing.
Make Matt Hooper first of all.
Mars University.
But they're different, right? Invent and Smart Zone are, are separate.
Yes.
It's an interesting idea, but I wouldn't do that for Ray Johnson.
Invent and...
Invent is separate, yep.
Okay, because they have a kiosk, so if I'm not mistaken, they've got, they've got a similar...
Well, they're separate, but they're kind of the same because Ray is overseeing both now. Ray's in the position of if somebody presents an idea, he'll know which avenue is the better way to go. Because the Smart Zone is very specific. It's the kind of jobs we can put money towards, more of your high-tech stuff. But if somebody presents an idea for a job that necessarily isn't high-tech, he, he can send them through the Invent at NMU stuff, which is what that is geared for. So it's really kind of getting towards one-stop shopping is what we're hoping to get to.
So they are sort of working together?
Yes.
Okay.
So they're separate, they're separate, but together.
Yeah. Commissioners, any questions? There is a lot of activity down, I do know that, at Smart Zone.
Right.
At Invent, NMU, Smart Zone. I mean, they're having workshops. They say, they say people are coming through with...
Yeah. And they're getting hundreds of ideas a quarter, and I mean, they, they have...
You wouldn't think so, but they are.
Yeah, and they have a quick explore service. So people have skin in the game, so you can pay a few hundred dollars. It's a minimal fee, but still you're vested and it covers some costs that they can see if there's, if it's a valid idea, if there's somebody who already has a patent for the idea. So it's very, I think it's a very good program. And I don't, I continue to be just impressed with what resources that are being put out for the community. And then they have the business on tap too. I'm sure you've seen the events at the RDOC and those have been very popular too, so.
Commissioner Plort?
Just a comment too, that I know Ray has an elaborate set of skills that is useful to universities and the cities, the different municipalities. And it's interesting that you mentioned, Leslie, that a lot of, you're getting that many ideas because my thought would be that they're just, we're just not pop, we're just not advertising enough. Or maybe we are. Maybe the word is getting around because it sounds like you have, Ray, they have all the work they can, they can use, at least at this point.
Yeah, definitely. I think, you know, they, I feel like they get discouraged sometimes because there aren't these new businesses yet. But it's, like I was saying, with people bootstrapping and not being ready to leave a full-time steady job to pursue this idea, people are putting their own dollars into these projects. And they're really cool and exciting things, but just how we can help these people in the community get from point A to B.
And one of the things that Ray has recently instituted was a short-term investment for investors that helps carry businesses, new businesses from the beginning stage across, kind of bridges it from the beginning stage into, I guess what best could be described is the middle stage where they're really manufacturing and really doing steady business.
Yeah, and what they, what Ray has said time and time again, it's just sometimes a couple thousand dollars is all the company would need between, to get them over that valley of death.
One more piece of equipment or one more person to hire or something like that just to get them, yeah, over that, that hump. So they're doing everything they can to make, make, help businesses succeed. So, you know, I would say if you have an idea, if you think, you know, someone who might be an entrepreneur who has an idea, contact the Smart Zone or, yeah.
I've got cheese lights, one of the first things to come through Invent. I don't know if anybody saw those. They're outdoor camping lights. Picked up two sets two years ago at the rec show. And Brian's new posture plank. That's going to do things for him, I can tell. I'm going to get one of those too. I need to, I need to straighten up a little bit. So do you.
We all do.
Okay, I think we're good. We're good?
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Leslie.
Only at 3:00 in the morning.
Okay, so that's the budget in four Funfields sessions. What we need to do next is we need to have you, after you have any further discussion that you want to have, before we leave, we need to schedule a public hearing for the budget for September 24th.
What's the wrap-up involved? Is that where we're at?
Yep, that's where we're at now.
We're, we're doing this now?
Yeah, I'm wrapping up now.
What's it take? You're going to wrap it?
I'm doing it now. I'm wrapping it up right now.
So we're done?
Nope.
Move on?
I'm trying to wrap up.
I didn't know the format so much. Wrap up, wrap up.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So I guess I better repeat all of that. So we just need to have you schedule a public hearing for September 24th. Tonight, before we leave tonight, yeah, before we leave tonight, we need to schedule the public hearing and then we'll get the notices out. And then at the September 24th meeting, we'll also have you schedule public hearings for the utility rate increases. And those public hearings will be held October the 9th, I think it is. It'll be the first meeting in October. And that is really all I have to say on the budget. Hopefully, you had all your questions answered. If you didn't, now would be a good time to ask. Or you can talk to Mike or myself later and we'll be glad to answer as we can. So I don't know, Mike, if you have any words of wisdom for us.
Just if you have any thoughts that might change what we're looking at, now would be a good time to tell us so that we can have it prepared for the 24th. I didn't sense anything other than, you know, answering a few questions along the way.
I didn't sense anything other than, you know, answering a few questions along the way, but I didn't, uh, sense anything that was out of the ordinary or that you might be opposed to, uh, keeping in mind that the, uh, utility rates will be a separate, separate item.
Separate from the twenty-fourth?
Yes, uh, we have to have a separate public hearing for those.
Okay.
That'll be on October ninth.
And are, if you, if we have questions for you, can we just, should, would you prefer that we just email them? Do we email them to everybody so that we, uh, as far as the, the commission goes, so that all the commissioners know the question at hand? How would you like that?
Probably a good idea that if you have a question, email everybody so that everybody understands what it might be and what the answer is.
Okay. So, I'd like to make a motion if I can.
So everybody, I don't see any questions at this time? Okay, so then we will entertain a motion.
Hopefully, this is the proper verbiage there.
Um, Commissioner Flago, would you care to make a motion?
I would move, or make the motion to hold a public hearing on September twenty-fourth to, uh, are we going to say adopt? No, not at that point, we're just going to be review?
Uh, just a public hearing to consider, take public comment and consider adopting the budget.
Take public comment and consider the two thousand eighteen.
Two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand nineteen budget, excuse me. Thanks for holding my hand.
Is there a second? Commissioner Plort?
I'll second.
Do we need any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say yes.
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 Oppose, that carries six zero.
Then the ninth will be utility? Pardon? What are you doing on the ninth?
Oh, October ninth, we will have the public hearing for the utility rates.
Do we need a motion for that?
No, that'd be, that motion will be made at the September twenty-fourth meeting.
Thank you.
So what we'd like to do is adopt the budget and then have the public hearings for the, uh, utility rates.
Yes. Looking forward to it.
Okay, I believe we are at public comment at this point. Can we open public comment? Margaret, do you wish to make a comment? If not, if not, we're going to close public comment. We're going to move to comments from the commission. I look left, right, none, city manager, good? We are adjourned. Commissioner Smith?
I had a second part of the question on the worksheet that was filled out, that was stated that the second level apartments are still not registered with the city rental program.
Would you care to address that at the front podium, please?
As we understood it, the, the remaining issue on that registry was a parking, um, diagram that was absent from our application. That's been done, that's been submitted, I don't know if it's been, if, if that's.